Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching Fact TV presentation of the town of Westminster Select Board Meeting.
We've asked Joe Ruggiero, our trash company, if there's something that's changed. Now's the time to let us know. So it's easier to add it into this budget now than to try to come up with money later. In some years it has, in other years it hasn't, but it's worth a phone call and I can get you his contact.
Okay, that'd be great, Jason. Thank you.
So extrapolate on that to say, basically, anything that we have contracts for or third-party obligations, so reach out and say, what is your anticipations?
I believe the trash contract was good till 25, but it had a...
Step in.
Yep, up to 5% every year, I think.
There's been years past where he's asked mid, like mid, because things change and then you've got to come up here, then just figure it out now.
We talked about, here are the other ones. For example, we do not have an ambulance contract directly, but we continue to pay Golden Cross. You don't know the reasonable contract? It's fixed value against fixed budget that hasn't changed, I don't think, in probably five years or so. But the same thing, reach out to Golden Cross and say, hey, ready to have a contract again? So we know the sheriff at town meeting had a huge change. So we treated the 25 budget based on all the decisions at town meeting for 24, which is why when you're looking at budget, it has the $120,000. Items we know to be, that are still going to require adjustments are salary lines. There is nothing built in for COLA or otherwise. The passive insurance amounts, the VEMAs retirement amounts, that's also dependent upon salaries and that the rate for the employer has gone up again, starting July 1 of '24. We were looking at, as we were building maintenance lines, and what was their intention? And are we doing something this year? Are we going to do something next year?
Every time you look at this bill, the paint's more formal, so we're going to do something.
And then we also discussed briefly the commitments that have to be made and timelines for the art funds to be committed and then spent by. So those are not direct relationships to the budget, but they are related to how our budget functions. Also in the revenue stream, in the last couple of years, the old timeless pilot payment railroad tax are now agreed upon to be split between Fire District and the town. So in the case of the revenue, you're going to see the budget line for the town go down because we are bidding approximately 12% of that money to the Fire District. It's directly a proportion of the total tax rate municipally divided by the Fire District's portion, by service of the Fire District's portion divided by the total tax rate. To give us what percentage of those state funds we go to them.
While I'm thinking about it, have you... I've looked and I can't afford to forgive me everyone. Do we have any debt outstanding?
None.
Zero. Not even on vehicles?
None that I know of that aren't.
Zero, so we are debt-free right now.
You are debt-free right now.
Thank you, sir.
Rare, I mean, rare. Don't we need a fleet of new trucks?
Again, thank you for setting it up this way. It's doing great.
When you say that's rare, is that rare compared to surrounding towns? Rare state one? Yeah. Where, if you, you'll flip right to the last page and you'll see transfers in the highway. Yes, transfers in the highway to the equipment fund, to the resurface fund. That methodology of a fixed amount annually going to a reserve account means, unless you spend it, that reserve account gets the residual that's left over. Meaning, year to year, you may put in $230,000 for equipment, but if you only spend $180, that 50 rolls to the next year to be added to the $230,000 the next year. Meaning, your tax rate stabilized, but your equipment fund able to pay cash until you don't have enough, then you are. Or you determine that you're going to simply spend surplus if you have such a requirement, which you do. So in keeping in line with that capital, we've had the discussion about capital and the desire to come up with a more capital plan that's more wide-ranging. And so within the budget, there was $15,000 descended to the highway grounds replacement. The number is being thrown around at $2 million, so $15,000 in a rack is the change and the cost to build it in a three-month period. So we're not getting ahead if we're trying to do that. Vermont State Buildings and Grounds does have structures grants and building grants that can be applied for with a grant right and skill set. And so those are things that we look into. We know that at town meeting, the voters last year chose not to return $20,000 and reduce the tax rate. And so this budget doesn't consider $20,000 and that to reduce the tax rate, which we can't repeat again any. So when looking through the lines on these pages, I ask you questions. There will be 50 of them anyway that will change. A question will be, at your next board meeting, to present to you the same document modified with the changes for 2025, which are the best, our best testaments that we have. And then the page that's also missing there intentionally this time is the estimated change in tax rate. This same style of budget presentation was provided to the Fire District, but I have not gotten any response from them of what they might want. And I'm hoping that we can present in the town report their budget in this format as we do town's budget in this format. So that's, you know, that'll show where we're at, why we're at, where we're at. And when you meet, it's like December 13th. It would be the intention, and everything modified at that moment in time, based upon a discussion we had this afternoon. Intentionally chose not to alter the document from what was told to be presented at the last board meeting. It is as, it is what it is. Can we move forward? In the interest of those who might care, we still have $2.7 million in a bank account, of which most of $2.1 million is owed to other funds. We're 43% through the year, so, yeah. Other than the last time I presented the financials to you at the last meeting, nothing erratic has happened, other than, thank God, you're higher than us.
Which, if I may, briefly, thank you for bringing that up, Chip. I just want to reverse quickly matters of communication, public comments. I do apologize. I wanted to take the opportunity to officially welcome Lou Bordeaux, our new town manager. Welcome. It's extraordinarily wonderful that you're with us and I'm looking forward to many successful years under your leadership.
Well, thank you, Kevin.
Very excited. Thank you.
I was just happy to be sitting at the table with you.
And, sir, there is a meeting with town manager on December 5?
Tuesday, December 5th. 5 to 6:30.
At the institute.
Just wanted to say that because of...
Well, thank you.
It's your first meeting, I correct?
It certainly is.
Yep, the first thing to do is buy that shit. Fuck that shit.
That was okay.
I wanted to correct that.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
So with that, between now and the next meeting, this spreadsheet will get modified. The discussion will be whether it's in conjunction with me or Lou doing it on his own. We've discussed many things since 4 o'clock today regarding staff, COLA, insurances, other benefits, even the contracts. So he's got quite a bit of his own research to do, decisions to make. And there may be some budgets that will be zeroed out to the number combined in another area for simplification in the budget and for a clearer picture of personnel. But those are all decisions that Lou will make and he, or he and I, will present it.
And I just want to add to that, Chip, that a lot of the categories that are listed on here, a lot of the descriptions and account numbers, I think they can be perhaps combined or modified somehow to have a more sensible picture for us. So hopefully we'll achieve that.
So, seeing you were just handed this 20 minutes ago, for those of you that are here. If you run across questions, as you review it, bring them to Lou's attention. Little, if needed, will reach out to me. Meanwhile, if you're done with me, I, once again, will depart these places and move on.
Thanks, Chip.
My time's coming to a close and I guess also just want to thank you for your work with thousands bigly in getting us through to our transition at town official after your fine work getting it done. And again, I take great pride, thinking for myself, but my peers here. To be debt-free as a town, that has a lot to do too with our people's advice that we make from you. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
And I'll tell you now, you do have more funds in PMA that can come back into...
And a little more coming.
And there's still more.
Little, little.
Little, yeah. Not the 50 we thought, I don't think, but...
No, no.
Thank you very much.
No problem. For those who served, thank you, and for those who will continue to serve, God bless you. If you're done with me, then shall we?
Yeah.
Lou, you're done with me?
All set. Thank you.
Drive safe. Travel well, Michael.
You want to move on?
Just a quick question. Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
At the next meeting, we'll have further discussion of that. And like David, our program town manager, I mean town...
Moderator.
Moderators, that's how moderators would like to come and know when we're discussing the budget. So I think that would be our next meeting.
You might want to give him a copy of this.
Yeah. I have two. I can have two. I don't want that to happen. Just ESP.
All right, moving on to new business, town meeting location. What I have in front of me is from Pauline to use the Bellows College Union High School. But there had been discussions of other locations.
No, we can't use those locations.
No, we can't.
I think that was happening here.
No, we can?
We can now.
It's open. The whole school's open.
Yes, I'm very pleased to hear that.
The discussion was whether we were going to look at Kernhampton or Westminster Center School because at that time, it wasn't open. Now it is.
Things are going to remain open?
Yes. Other than the acoustics, I think that's the biggest complaint there is that the recording is just really hard to get, to take minutes from.
Yeah, it's terrible acoustics in that auditorium, however it is where the town is used to going. So if we were having it anywhere else, we'd have people wondering, looking for it.
Well, that was my concern with, my only concern with Kernhampton was that we don't own that building. Westminster School, High School, we're, that's a town building essentially, and I think we should utilize town facility before we lose a private. So the suggestion I got today from Pauline, and she can certainly give us her suggestion, was to just go with the high school. We have a timeframe to get this into and try to explore a better PA slash recording situation.
And everybody's used to going to the high school anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, so a move at this point would be not due to the crisis at the high school right now.
Correct.
But would be due to the, just wanting a even more in-town and maybe better acoustical place. But it would be the gymnasium, I imagine, if it was in the center school that's there, which may or may not have better acoustics.
Yeah, it has its own system, but I don't know. I mean, I've never listened to a recording there, so I don't know if it's...
I'm just saying, the overall, if we're able to take out recording and PA systems, it is sadly true that the Bellows College Union High School auditorium has terrible acoustics. And, but a gymnasium generally does as well, so...
My only thought before you got, before we actually started the meeting is maybe instead of trying to, nobody wants to sit in the front anywhere.
Yeah.
And I get it, but maybe we should try to coordinate some of those seats and just get everybody at least to that middle section where you can hear better, everybody can see better, and just try to move condensed. I don't know. That's my suggestion.
With the existing PA, and I know this from my parents, very limited here. That the actual best place to hear is actually the back of the front section, rather than the front of the front section, because the speakers are coming down at an angle that is suitable for the rear portion of the front section, or maybe the front or the back section, as opposed to right in the front. Otherwise, I would just say, if it was simply a matter of speaker, non-broadcast stuff, we'd simply make everybody sit up in the front. And there is certainly room for everybody in the front.
Little quadrant.
But people like to spread out a bit.
We could also just ask Floyd. He provided the PA system for behind the institute. Maybe we could just...
Use our own system?
See if we could borrow that or write it from him. Maybe Fact TV has a better setup that we can... But location-wise, I think we need to pin down the location so that it can be sent in and all that.
Is there, the way people ask about why can we use it now and why couldn't we use it earlier in the fall? Is there a logical...
Yep, they did a second, their second round of air testing came back and with... They didn't put the filters in those rooms, auditorium or the gymnasium, and both those figures, those testing came back below the actionable level. So they did another test to verify that, which personally I think they shouldn't have done in the first place. And they confirmed that those numbers are down and they still have to do work in those buildings, in the building. But the numbers are down, the levels are below the, I think it's called state actionable level.
It's kind of nice you're on a building less full.
Yeah, I don't want to get into... I don't think the numbers were good to begin with. I think it sent everything into a panic, but that's just like... But anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was going to say, Floyd.
Pauline, did you have, sorry. Did you have something you wanted to add to that?
No, I think, I think that's, that, you know, that was my main concern. We can certainly work with Floyd or Fact TV and just make sure that the, the sound system is, is better this time around.
All right.
But we've already put into Secretary of State, that's where it's going to be, so, I mean, we could change it. If, if, if you're going to espote it, again, something, we, we have that window to change it. But I'm glad, I'm glad everybody's in agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bellows College Union High School for the location of the 2024 town meeting.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. You have the 2024, which is the town meeting, the Bellows College Union High School.
And authorize the town manager to sign the facility use form.
And I'm just assuming that the school board will also have to be here? And the fire, just to go have meetings too? I mean, we all do, we do all these meetings together, but...
I don't think, I think they do what we call them.
Okay.
In that scenario.
It's the select board's decision.
Where the town meeting is.
Lovely, okay. Good. I just tell what I feel right now. I think it was good.
That's okay. The question's it. We're going with it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dedication and Citizen of the Year. We usually go into the executive session to discuss this, so we'll skip this and... Or do we want to, is there a deadline, Pauline? Do you know? You're muted.
Muted. That, that doesn't go through us.
I didn't know, just being down on the office.
I think it's, I, I checked with Kelly. Checked with Kelly for the town report.
Yeah, which I think is a December trend.
Is everyone, I'm trying to remember here. Is everyone okay with maybe doing 15 minutes on this in the executive session?
I'm good with that. Okay, so we'll do that. Community policing initiative. So our town manager, Mr. Bordeaux, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I've had a couple of meetings with Sheriff Anderson over the last couple of weeks. He's introduced to Wyndham County towns that do not have police departments. What he's foreseeing is a pilot program, which if everything goes along as proposed, will give our residents better protection at roughly the same cost. He's asked for a letter of support for this program because he's going to have to engage in getting some special legislation drafted so that the state gives him permission to run the pilot program effective July 1st. He says that bills need to be filed by December 1st, so there's some urgency to it. But the Reader's Digest version is that we should get better service, better value for roughly the same money that we're spending now.
Is there some scope of, how does this look different from what we're doing now?
Ideally, what it would be is where we have a contracted amount of hours, what it would look like is that we no longer have any of our residents or anybody else in town told that you're, essentially you're out of hours. That, you know, if we have extra hours, Putney might use them, Rockingham might use it, one of the other small towns might use them. But what it would do at that point would ensure that we have pretty much regular deputy on duty in town.
Similar to what we're doing with Putney, but larger.
I see.
Right. Yeah, that's exactly it.
Now, there have been certain hours that have been covered by state police essentially, not by the county. And they were like big chunks of...
10:00 PM to 7:00 AM or something like that, and...
Yeah, I was, I was told that for any emergency, the state police are supposed to be the primary. But this is where it gets a little sticky and I spent three hours with the sheriff on Monday trying to really unearth a lot of this. But in its, in its purest form, this sounds like something that's good for the town. There's certainly no guarantee that it's going to happen because incrementally, there's a lot of things that have to add up to get to that point where it becomes an actual pilot program.
Legislature would have to pass.
Yeah.
It's got a whole bunch of steps to do.
Yeah, yeah, but this, this would be a first step to ensure that we have a seat at the table as things move forward.
A letter of support.
Yes.
Would you like me to read the letter out loud? All right. Sheriff Anderson, we have become aware of your interest in improving services to the town of Westminster and throughout Wyndham County. The potential for improving services at a similar cost to what we now pay offers value to our residents. Based on that, we, the members of the Westminster Select Board, along with our town manager, would like to be included in future discussions and meetings that may lead to this pilot project becoming reality. Sincerely, the Westminster Select Board.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a question. I'm curious about, if you mentioned hours for the state police. It used to be on the sheriff's day, like I had an emergency, somebody would come in my barn taking my pickaxe and, or down, walks down the driveway, goes home, and we heard a car. It was a Thursday, so that was the day of the sheriff that they're allowed here. So the state police sent me to them. It took at least three and a half hours for them to get there. And I'm just wondering, so what days are the sher, when can we call the state police? You would have been there in 10 minutes because they're only five minutes away.
It may be, maybe.
If I can speak to that, there's actually a real problem with dispatching. I was told that for any given call that comes in, it's got the potential to be bounced to three different dispatch centers, which is problematic. And again, as it should be, if a state police trooper is available, they should be able to respond. But it seems that, and I have not, I'm sorry, I've not been here long enough to experience it, but they farm everything out to the sheriff's department pretty automatically. And that's something that I think if this program comes to pass, it's really going to streamline that a lot. The technicality seems to be that the state police would still be the primary respondent. But historically, where they get bounced around, the practice is going to be that it's really going to fall on the sheriff's department.
Right, and but you were mentioning the times, open 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, the state, someone mentioned that. The state police...
The sheriff is usually not on during that time.
Okay, so I'm...
So state police cover.
So Westminster, how did we know, how did we know that I'm going to call the state police number anyway? That's what I did, and they referred me to, they patched me through the sheriff because it wasn't, it was their day for our town and it happened during the day. So shouldn't our residents know what days that, what times, and I don't think we have that posted.
I don't think we even know that. I think we just know we don't have 24-hour help. I think they have something else.
State police first.
Yeah, and in my experience, it's the same as yours. You call here, they send you to the sheriff. You call the sheriff, they send, there's a lot of this, and you're stuck in the middle going, well, I just want help. And it's a very false sense of security that we have a state police that's in town, so they're going to come right here in two seconds. Negative.
They're very, they're very rarely there.
Unless you happen to catch it where somebody, where one of the officers is there and like, it's, it's just not that way, unfortunately.
If we didn't hire out the sheriff's department, what would, who would we call?
You'd call state police and you'd be waiting a long time.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious. I don't know.
That's how you...
And if the state police respond once a crime is committed, they don't respond...
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
And so we, but they're Wyndham County sheriff, we'd still have to hire them to protect the county laws in Wyndham County.
Correct, they contract with each town individually. One town chooses two, some town, town itself.
Just curious, just questions, I think, other people that I was reading and we don't understand.
We went through this earlier in the spring about maybe we should try our own...
program.
I watched, I watched the meeting online.
Yeah.
I'm.
It's so expensive to do it.
And guys, now, how can you hire someone, you know, so far down?
It does sound loose point, too. I know they've had a dispatcher position up in Westminster for like a year.
Wow.
So I don't know who covers it, like you said, where it gets patched to, but.
Right, we don't know.
And I can add one other thing to it. The last town that I had this position in had their own police department, smaller population than Westminster is, and just to run that department, not counting the equipment or the police station or anything else, was roughly half a million dollars a year. Wouldn't we spend a hundred and twelve?
Yeah, but if people are not, at some point, happy with the service, they may be willing to pay that. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out.
You guys might know better, better than I do, but I had a call, I think two months ago now, the state police called me and said, the burglar is going off the highway right. And I was like, okay, are you going? And, right, and then they said, no, you don't have a contract with us, it's the state police. So apparently, for stuff like that, you have to, as a town, you have to contract with them.
This building has, this building has contracts.
Okay, well, apparently.
It was a separate form that came with the whole cameras and whatnot, so I don't, maybe, I didn't know that.
When I talked with the state police about, when we were discussing our own police department, they are not contracting with individual towns because they have staffing issues essentially.
It's not even an option.
So technically, it's not an option.
Yeah, because I dial in to Keenwood Lloyd, and then they go from there. They call, they call the state police, Keenwood Lloyd doesn't, the state police call me and go, John Wayne, done.
They're probably our first, our first option only by default.
Yeah.
Simply because they're state police in Vermont, state town, but they're not, they don't contract with you.
They're not coming.
It's kind of, it's just.
It is.
But maybe this will help.
Okay, so there's a motion, don't forget there's a motion. That's made and seconded. Oh, we didn't do it, thanks, sorry, I'm behind, all right, nevermind.
They're done.
All right, moving on, Cemetery B, Kevin.
Boy, I'm gonna miss these.
I was gonna say, what are they gonna do here?
But you guys aren't gonna miss me reading these. It does. You guys won't miss me, but I'll miss doing it. Okay, no wall, loads by these presents. Town of Westminster, the county of Wyndham, and the state of Vermont, in consideration of the sum of $1,660 received, aware of, and does hereby, knowledge has and does hereby freely remiss, release, and forever quit claim unto Howard Deets. And heirs and assigns forever 10, that's 10, the number 10, burials in section E, row 3, graves, numbers 136, 137, 138, 139, 140, 141, 142, 143, 144, and 145, in the Westminster new cemetery, and perpetual care thereon, subject to whatever restrictions are imposed by law. This conveyance is subject nevertheless to the express condition that said lots or plots of land shall be used, possessed, and occupied exclusively for the purpose and for objects and purposes incident thereto, and for no other object and purposes, and subject also to such regulations now existing or hereafter to be made and provided under the laws of Vermont by said board of cemetery commissioners or their successors in office. We miss my hand and steel on this till the second day of November 2023, in the presence of Kevin Hughes, Town of Westminster, and as by due law, I made it, the street of Hamilton, like we're there.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That one.
All right, reappraisal update. Second away.
Yes, I'm at Cohen, this is Jackie Applewood, we're two kids of the Board of Misters, and we have, we put out, as we know, a press proposal for town, and we received two responses, two proposals. There were mostly non-responses from, from, since we contacted several organizations and said they didn't do this on Vermont, that they were too busy, and they left, and they just declined. Of the two proposals that we received, one essentially provided nine of the services that our proposal requested, they wanted us to give $230,000 for the Misters to perform their reappraisal work, and they just do a kind of sleight of hand with some statistics, and that did not be sufficient for us. The other proposal is from Winrick, and it's for rapid, in front of you, and I'll just point you to page, page nine, also do a figure of $167,040, which includes, basically, everything that we have figured out, the proposed proposals. In addition to that, because we have the, what they call maintenance contract with Winrick for them to perform our ongoing appraisal work, which includes things like clinic inspections, dealing with transfers, and involved, a subdivision for better, where there's some valuation that the Misters can't perform, dealing with current use, and similar things. This $167,000 would include that maintenance contract on the roof, which is $20,000, which is probably going to be spent on this because they can't separate out, or that would include that for the appraisal from the maintenance, if that makes sense. That's, that's, this is part within the budget that we estimate.
Can I ask you, do we have that, do we have that line?
Yes, so.
Didn't we have like 200 and something?
Because there was a portion that's taken out of your taxes for that state.
I was just trying to find it, and it's.
It sounded like, whoa, I'm not going to be. Yeah, we have 210 or something.
So the, the money that we have set aside is from a per parcel reimbursement that we get from the state. It's basically for the Misters doing the work of their education survey on the new addresses that the state needs that information to set the.
I think it's 210.
Oh. I don't think it's.
It's part of our, I don't see, but not our, but.
I have 172,143.
I'm sorry, what was that?
172,143.
Okay.
And that's how much we have now, and we get about, it's $83,000, $83.50 per parcel from the bank, so by the time we get to the time frame, by the time we actually start to pay them, we'll have a clue, we'll have several thousand dollars. So we have, we have the funds. I'm just saying, I don't know that. Yes, so if you, if you look on the third page of the next proposal, you'll see this list, kind of reappraisal slash update project, and it's a kind of a calendar year, in this kind of terms, they are booked way ahead, and the changes in the market that resulted from the pandemic, and one on the market meant a lot, a lot, a lot of towns having to do a town with a result at the same time. So they're, they're pricing to begin the reappraisal, this is back on page one, they're both, we have processes listed, to begin in July, June, and May, and we'll, we'll complete the lodging of the Misters, and do this, do this process in June, or February, so. Even if we had proposals from other fronts, they would probably not give us any dates because the rest of the town is a lot of trying to do this at the same time here. So we don't really have many options, and ideally, we would be doing it, but this is like what, what we have to choose. Some of the outsides of Winrick, we know all of our software systems are compatible for because they're, there's, they're programs, like we call it PAMA, which is the evaluation of the house, and the present, including statistics about property in the county, we exert a kind of module of rates, you know, so kind of slate roof versus a metal roof versus a shimo roof, it sets those multipliers, and then you type the number of the size of the roof, and it multiplies that on one, and that's what PAMA, the GAN system is, and that's a Winrick supported program. So having them do our reappraisings, they, they understand how our data is set up, they quickly provide our units, so they're up on the law, without limitations on available pieces, which are many, using this cabinet program, it's the Misters, Westminster's work, and the way we have it, the benefits to get up to speed on doing the proper work that Misters are doing in some other towns, they want to make sure they're fully visible.
And to keep the assessments unbiased, too, as they seem to want to have an outside assessor, because we have that issue in the past.
I'm glad you're here. So ignore your experience here.
Right.
Forgive my ignorance, but you're the expert. So you do your home improvement, let's say there's a net necessity between, we contract for this, and this pretty never decided, big work it was.
Right, could be.
Okay, so if I do the $200,000 worth of improvement on the house, to clean out and conclusion of the reappraisal, that is going to affect my reappraisal from the outside, if it's not on the individual parcel, on the individual actual house, in your opinion?
So you're saying, I'm, I'm trying to understand, do you mean so improvements?
Let's assume my house is, I don't, I use mine, but let's assume my house is, is used as an example, and it's one of the selected things that they look at.
Right, so I, I would say it's all going to depend on if they come inside or not, if they're allowed inside. A lot of times on a town-wide reappraisal, like Rockingham did one during COVID, other towns had to, it was all drive-bys, they were not going into properties, and of course, most people aren't, are either not going to be home when our assessor on my reappraisal happens, so we look hard. If you're lucky, they might call you back, but you don't have to. So if all your improvements are done on the outside.
Yes.
It's going to look a lot better. If they're all done on the inside and they're not able to go in, that can, if you don't know, you might have way back rooms, and we still show one bathroom.
I'm with you.
That kind of thing, but really, it's supposed to go by sales studies and what's sold, you know, in the past, so that's why they were able to do drive, you know, drive-bys during those years, and it is, it's like real estate, where they're going to come here, land, size, where, footage, all that is what, what they should be doing.
But in your opinion, but conceptually, if you did a whole bunch of stuff to the outside, and you're doing a drive-by, it's going to be.
Let's do your kitchen, Justin, don't worry about the depth.
Yeah. I see a lot of properties that haven't been reassessed because nothing's been done on the outside, and they're nice on the outside, they're perfect, but the inside have friends and pigeons, and, you know, and if we don't have, and we're not supposed to change anything from 2013 anyway, because we have to reassess it.
I'm glad you're here. You're really terrific guys, I said for the down, last one point, guys. So let's go back to nine, the 167,000. Okay, so we contracted 167, let's assume we get the timeline in, these guys finish up by 27. Are we locked into that 167, or can they come back and say, well, we had additional costs, et cetera, et cetera? Or we saying it's 167, that's what you're contacting for, we're locked down at that, you're not going to exceed 167,000?
No, on the back.
We got others.
Yeah, so we're responsible for expenses relative to purchase of computer hardware and software.
We have.
Paper.
We use their software, and.
Exactly, that shouldn't be. We're responsible for expenses and salaries of town officials.
But they didn't say, they don't say that they're going to increase their hourly rate or.
Under cost of reappraisal, it does say the last line, beyond this number of parcels will be charged, we're all, hearing requested, so that's where you're going to jump into.
That's only, that's only for DCA rooms.
Yeah.
Right, if somebody.
Through the grievance hearing stage, this is a closer.
Oh, oh, oh. But you, you guys are.
Helping us.
Yeah, you guys have the opinion that we should go with that, right?
We don't have a choice.
So we only have two choices, and the other choice that.
So I just want, no problem. I just want to have a, and I'm, I'm taking your advice because I trust you.
Yeah.
I am, I'm thinking for myself.
I wish there was someone sooner because I think the old state can change by 2027, they just can, obviously, change, and they're not going to go on.
Understood.
So that's the only.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're, while we're blocking this number.
I don't think we have a choice, and that's why you're lower.
No, no, it's a good number, I'm just trying to, you know, when we talk about the overall final number of cost, there's any way for us to get, you know, it's not really 167, it's going to be something higher.
Right, so there, for example, there will be additional Mister outfits.
Okay.
Because there are parts of this, of this process that the Misters will be involved in, just for example, the grievance hearings, although we request to be on proposals, the, the reappraisal, the assistive, the grievances, and that person doesn't keep explaining their process, or they're using, setting a particular value, which the Misters would know, they have, have an understanding of. But there needs to also be a Mister present, because of the reassigned process, the, I don't know, could be significantly more grievance in some law, you know, here, or, or.
Last one is 2013, never mind, I mean, it was days, it's a, I don't remember, so.
And there will be, there will be clear for work that you can perform.
I'm going to, I'm going to shut up, I appreciate that, I'm all for this, I, I just, I would feel a little bit more comfortable, I would, just making sure that we have a little bit more detail transparency on the fact that our expenses for this total project could exceed, could go somewhat higher, and if we come close to another, that would be even great as well. That way, we can at least tell the folks, we didn't just.
Right.
Do it, not knowing that, you know, we did 167, but it came in at 240.
What, what I was anticipating was, once we, we say to Winrick, yes, we want to accept your proposal, then we sit down with them, because we've never gone through a reappraisal process as Misters, to find out, sort of, what are the, what are the steps, does that involve, is there equipment that we don't have, that you're going to, going to use, we were talking today, is our office space sufficient, we can hopefully, we can afford, there's a chunk of revisionist thing that's new to us. We, we have, we're scheduled, we have a couple of years to figure out exactly what we're going to do, we will, we'll put in the budget for the Misters for the year that this commences, and we each, let's hope you all get, we're going to be, instead of 18 hours of Misters per week, we're going to be five hours, or whatever, we'll have more information.
So you could approve this number, can I?
Yeah.
It's two years.
Right.
You can lock everything else into the budget.
At least lock them in, put us on the schedule.
Right, we do need to get. We do need to get in this, but, but just for comparison, other company that wasn't going to provide any inspection work, they, they would basically go, give us as such a system to take in, the misters would be required to all of the updating, all of the database information, the history cards, taking photographs of one of those, then the misters, they quoted us 250,000. So virtually no.
Thank you for your synopsis, your summation. I just wanted it on the record that we actually had more of an in-depth discussion. This is fantastic and thank you for.
As we go along.
Yeah, that's what I'm done.
As a procedural question, just quite clear, this, this bid is the bid that the listers recommend that we choose. Is that correct?
Correct.
Great. Because we have, we have procedure. And then we have the procedure of this is over the $10,000 bid limit purchasing policy. So we have to, having only two bids, we have to make a exception to our purchasing policy. And we have to have a motion to that effect in order to approve this bid. That's fine. If we do that, but we in order to do this correctly and take, and to take select board responsibility for approving this bid, we have to also approve this exception to the purchasing policy.
I actually read, it's been some time now, but before we started this, writing the specific proposals, I read the town's requirements for, for bidding them like this. And it sounds like there's already an exception for technical, technical support or services that where they're being locked in.
Yeah. And the other part of it, Rachel, is you've reached out to several other agencies that weren't able to give you an estimate for the job.
We can make an exception, as we are doing, and, and, and that, that allows us to make an exception, but it is, it is healthy for us to have a motion that approves it. So somebody who complains about future costs and the, the not being, the, it not following our purchasing policy, is then an explanation in the record, this is why we did it. It's, it's a sort of preventative against future discussion of whether this was a good idea. I, I believe it's a good idea, I just, it's just a procedure. So I would like to make the motion that we approve the NIMRIC bid for our reappraisal process and that we make an exception to our purchasing policy in the light of there being only two bids, but this is the bid that we choose.
So move.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have one more question, and this is, it just came up in your discussion about external house versus interior inspection. It does, it does trouble that the interior changes can be exempt unless they find somebody at home. And really, the people that are most finding home would be retired folks. And so it, it kind of, kind of puts the burden of increased property values due to internal home improvements on the, on people who are going to be at home, presumably retired, as opposed to away from home. And that's not fair. Somebody who's slaving away on a bathroom project tonight, but it, but it's just, it's just the general principle is not quite fair.
So they do attempt to make the interior inspection and will leave a comment, more than a comment. And the second thing I would say, we can specifically talk to the, the officers, in, during the pandemic, there were sort of alternatives to the, the process of going inside because they were on telephone, you know, where we would go through a kind of checklist. We had a whole number of, sort of, we were not necessarily seeing, but they would ask really complicated questions that maybe someone would be more hesitant to lie about how many bathrooms they had, and maybe do to just not allow someone to come in, load, how many bathrooms they had. So we can, we can implement something like that, which is still, it's never going to be on the per se, they're never, we're not, there's, legally we're not able to enter someone's house without permission, and so it's not going to be permissioned. So, but we can make it as good as we can, that's, that's our intent, just to make it as thorough and fair.
Do you need, other than the motion that we made tonight, do you need authorization for our town manager to sign for things or?
I think we need to have a contract first.
Okay.
This is.
Wasn't sure.
Get a contact from them and then.
Because I know there was a deadline to submit stuff, I think in the state, before the end of December, I believe. They've extended it a couple of times because people, towns can't find anyone.
Would it be helpful to have a motion to authorize the town manager to sign so it doesn't have to come back here?
You think needed?
Yes, to keep the process moving, that we can, I'll authorize, I'd make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign con- contract with NIMRIC that was for the townwide reappraisal, reappraisal when, when it presented.
So move.
Motion has been.
Seconded, sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else with reappraisal update? All right. Moving on to town manager's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my first meeting here and, thank you again, Kevin. You're too kind, I appreciate that. While this is my first meeting here, this is not my first meeting of this type of body. I've been involved with municipal government for most of the last 12 years, but it is an honor to be sitting amongst you tonight. I was a select board member in Bernstein, Massachusetts from 2012 to 2015. Served as chairman of the board in 2014 and I'm happy to say the town still survives, so that's a good thing. I've been the town coordinator since 2018 until November 11th. So it was a very short retirement before I came here to Westminster. I've had the opportunity to meet with our town hall staff, our highway department, as I said earlier, met with sheriff a couple of times already. I've also had the opportunity to meet some of the residents in town. So, so far, so good. I'm looking forward to a long relationship with the town. You know, this is a great little community, got a lot of positives to offer and I think our collaboration, we're going to be able to build on that and really take it to the next level. As you said earlier, Madam Chair, next Tuesday, meet the manager, 5:00 to 6:30 over at the Westminster Institute. They had me at cookies. It'll be coffee and cookies. I'm going to skip the coffee a little late at night, but cookies, if there's cookies, you can guarantee I'm going to be there. And that's really all I have, it's kind of a light town manager's report, but.
You're only two of you.
There we go.
And there was a holiday.
Right. All right. All right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Road Foreman's report. Does anybody have, sorry, does anybody have any questions for Lou? All right.
Okay. So our new heating system is up and running as of yesterday and seems to be doing okay. You see how it goes, still no way to tell. Basin Brothers started this week, Monday, started working down on Plain Banks Road to armor that bank. The roadside after the COVID blew out, the Beaver Pond blew out and the state recommended that we do that. You guys okay to, it's been a while, so I just wanted to break everybody's memory. So they, they should be done possibly tomorrow, but definitely by Friday. I'm working on a Better Roads Grant on Wellington Hill Road West, that narrow culvert, it's an old metal culvert right there, Basin Brothers, it's really narrow. I've called for a hydraulic study, I can't do a whole lot until that happens. Scott Johnson's pretty tied up with other stuff with all the flooding that's happened throughout the state, so hopefully you'll get that done so I have time after, make it all happen. I'm currently working on options for plowing. It's become a real challenge the last couple of years. It seems like the first two or three storms of every year, then in the middle of January, we have one or two storms and then in the spring, where the roads are really, really soft and you're trying to plow conventionally and, you know, they're losing so much gravel off the side of the road, it creates damage to the plows, it's just, it's really kind of a nightmare. I'm looking at rubber cutting edges, the cost effectiveness of that and if, what the feasibility would be to get used plows somewhere. So we have a spare plow already set up, it's, it's pretty labor intensive to change your cut edges. So it'd be nice to have plows all set up and say, all right, this time of the year we're going to use these plows and this time we're going to use these. So I'll keep you posted how I, how I make out. I'm also working with Everett Hammond to, we're going to come up with a RSMS, which is a road surface maintenance system, which we've had in the past, it's just really outdated. And what that is, we'll go around, we'll look at all the asphalt roads and come up with a schedule and try to, try to figure out where we're going to be so that, you know, budget wise, every year I can shoot from the hip, we're going to, we're going to pave this road, we're going to do this. And it'll also include asphalt maintenance as far as crack sealing and, and, you know, also doing some like bond seal type stuff for, to, to try to get more longevity out of our asphalt. Right now, we, we budget roughly enough for, to pave one mile of road a year, we have 20 miles of road. So you're, you're asking for a mile of road to last, last 20 years and just, it, it doesn't happen. Then it rides around on our roads, that's what's going on. So we need to try to figure this out and come up with a better system, that's all.
Yeah. As you've heard, I, from the townspeople point of view, to know, oh, you know, you're driving along and you're complaining about the road and to say, well, that's being done in 2027. And that's what is being done and so you just know it, all right, it's going to be done 2027. And, but, but it would create, I think, a higher level of satisfaction so people not, not just, it gets done when we complain loudly enough about it, but it gets done on this schedule. There we go. So I, I think having, having that available and having that very public document, some people just know what to expect and people always want the road that, that is most familiar to them or they feel is in the roughest shape to be paved next to it. But if we, a schedule.
What, what, what typically happens with a lot of towns is you, you want to go pave your worst road, you want to throw all your apples, all your budget into your worst road and you turn your back on maintenance. And so that road you've turned your back on is just continuing to get worse while you, you just never get caught up. So we need to look at that and try to come up with a better, better plan.
And allow us to budget as well.
Correct.
Maybe budget some more for that job. Right. I did have a question about the plow edges. Is it possible, and you can tell they just doesn't work, just to lift the plows more or do they fobble and?
Well, so that.
Along.
To a point, but okay, so none of our roads are perfect. If you were plowing an airstrip, that'd be perfect, that'd be the greatest scenario. But because the road's doing this, so you lift your plow a little bit, then you go into a dip and now it's digging in and then you go back uphill and now you're leaving snow on the road and then, so you, you just can't, you just can't keep up with it. Now, I mean, you're constantly trying to do this to, to keep up with.
I go the motocross track.
Yeah.
Well, I noticed on the Milankis Road, which you've just done such a beautiful, Sergeant Lawler, and then because it's south part of it, round curve, it's south facing and it was soft, that snow and all that nice, flat, beautifully graded stuff.
Is now piled up on the side.
It's piled on the side and it's all big, you know, rough rocks where the plow dug in and it's, it's a little tragic actually.
Yep.
And, and that road is, I mean, gosh, the town.
Have you guys tried those?
The rubber.
What's that?
Have you tried any yet?
Oh, we have in the past, we've had, no, not good luck. So I'm reaching out to, I've, I've talked to my supplier, I'm going to reach out to other towns and kind of get a feel for what they're doing.
It seems like it's a problem, it's going to be everywhere.
Well, it's, it's here, so that's what's, we need to, we need to figure it out sooner, sooner than later.
So down with my sugar house, there's an old road roller. Are you just making ass for my slang?
You're volunteering to roll your road?
No, you can take the road roller, I can't tow it, my old horse died.
On asphalt maintenance, I know in the past you would ask for a line item for that to just be able to keep track of it.
I'm going to ask again.
Is that something that would be helpful?
I'm going to ask again, I'd really, I'd really like to add, and this is going to be crazy, but we, what we really need is about $50,000 in asphalt maintenance.
Yeah.
To, to do that, to, to take like school street out of the chip seal. You ought to, you ought to take and seal that and chip seal it and you might get another 10 years out of that, out of that street before it becomes.
And that's a heavy traffic street.
Right. Before it becomes all beat up. Take care of it now. You're not going to pay in the beginning or the end, you know what I mean? But it's going to buy us some time. You don't want to, every, you can't reconstruct every road and that's where we're getting into because we continue to go further behind and every year we level funds and if the price goes up, we get further behind. So we need to.
Driveway I care take on Pat Road, washed on the bottom of Culvert, I think that's a half road, but I counted, I think, six layers of pavement there. It's that thick, there's no, no doubt it's that thick.
And that's why.
It's not, it's not terrible, that road's not bad, but I'm just saying like.
Right. And that's what we need to, we need to start budgeting enough money, like we did up above the school, that's the way it was in Westminster West and that's how we took in, we reclaimed that whole road, did a full depth renovation, we then we graved it all up and put it right back into road base and then paved over it. So we added to the base, we replaced all the culverts on that whole stretch of road while we had it tore up and.
But that was what, 380,000 bucks?
Exactly. Back then, that was before COVID. So that, that, you know, that project now would probably be close to 500,000 bucks.
My only point, I guess, is if you thought that that would be a, a line item that you would want to see, I would have no issue putting that in there. Just try to keep track of asphalt maintenance and transparency that this is what we spend on.
Particularly if it lines up with the plan that's developed.
Right, correct. And I, this, of course, this plan that I'm getting developed is going to be a little while out to do it. He's, he's going to, I'm going to ride around with him actually tomorrow, he's going to come back with a price to put this whole thing together. He, he gave me, and I can send it to you guys if you're interested, to look at Halifax, he did the same thing for them, it's pretty comparable to what we would see for us. It's going to cost like five or $6,000 to put this all together, which in my opinion is well worth the money. It's, you know, it's, it's an engineer doing it, it's not me, it's.
Well, just to have a schedule and a plan.
That can change, but at least it's a direction.
Right.
And it's done by somebody that knows more about what's going on than I do.
And to Stephen's point, of course, you do get lost in, and I do it too, the road that you travel the most, you hit that same hole and you go, why aren't they fixing this hole? When, when in reality, Bob's Road way over there is 10 times worse than that, you just don't know it because you don't go there.
Right.
So it'd be nice to have a, like Stephen said, well, we know this road, three years from now, it's scheduled to be done, as long as something drastic doesn't happen, should be okay.
If you have to, it could be right there in the town park.
Well, the nice thing about having this all done, if something happens to me, something happens to Lou, you guys change yearly, we've got it. The town's got a plan. The next guy's got a plan. It's not a shooting from our hip every year.
Right. Just to touch on plan, I feel the same way about, about the five-year capital improvement plan, we talked about it.
And then.
We talked about it for, it seemed like meetings on, upon end and then it just kind of like.
We got distracted.
We don't have, we still don't have an actually plan, a like, like you're talking about a written, like this building needs this.
A, a extended year road plan would be a good part of that.
Yes. That would be part of it.
Some of the capital plan, we were picking it down so we have the town manager.
Yeah.
Very well.
We now have, we now have the town, we now have the town manager and we now have our team in place and.
Some of the government plan, we were picking it down so we have the town manager.
Yeah.
We now have, we now have the town, we now have the town manager and we now have our team in place. And that's what we need to focus on, a town manager can.
Yeah, that's something to keep on.
Spark a spearhead on that.
Didn't mean to change the sentence.
Yeah.
No, that's a great thought. That is a good.
Any more questions for Charles?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve the road manager's report.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve road foreman's report. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we'll do executive session after boards committees, which is one of the business.
Can I make a good comment on that though? If we're going to approve like town manager's report, road foreman's report, shouldn't we have that?
In writing?
Like, I realize it's something, another task for someone to do, but shouldn't we have that as a document?
Technically, yes.
Probably.
You did, yeah. Do you?
Just purely speaking from a.
Yeah.
An outline, Eddie, an outline.
I'm just saying, you want some bullet points or you want?
No, no, no. Bullet, bullet point, fine. No, no, this is a. Don't, don't, don't write a essay.
Don't do things.
I didn't mean, I don't mean to add extra work.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying.
You can just take your little note.
Do we have a second time?
Motion to move through executive session to discuss the citizen of the year and to include the town manager.
Motion has been made and seconded.
I still.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.